Good evening, this is my I of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman in that hat, prepare. Alderman's in a good outfit. Ads have a few will be in shortly. Alderman, have you heard from him?
Yeah.
I'm going to bring him up here.
There will be an engineer, he just called me, one of the ones that wants to speak to you guys for the RFQ. He's stopping along the way through Papa Love, he's on his way, so whenever he gets here, we'll put him on stage. I guess we'll start with grinder priorities and how they want to be charged for that ordinance. Right there, Mary, listen, we put our footnotes in that first book right there.
Okay, this is my... Well, I'll just say to you guys, because I pretty much know it.
You know.
Okay. And the orange one where you were saying, we've got an E.
I was thinking we had that in one of the books.
She wrote the whole thing, that book, and then she just got out, yeah.
But it...
She's like your missing section E or something.
No, I think she said we didn't add, to add a section E.
Exactly, I said that. Okay, that's something that fell into another...
It was one of, it was one of the other ordinance, yes. But she said since that's a newer one, we needed to add that section, yeah. We need to amend that, maybe add that section to that.
I knew it was in one of them.
Yeah, I did.
Otherwise I wouldn't have been able to do what I had done, yeah.
That's why I was very much here, like, well, it's still got to be in here to be, this is forbidden for bodies, or, so...
So she's saying you're going to have to charge it, that E has to be in there, is that what she's saying? Customers served by branded pump shelving?
Yes.
So that needs to be added?
Added, yeah, to that.
To that one, even though we have a...
Even though it's not repealing that older one, since that's a newer ordinance, she said we need to...
Just add it to it.
Add it to that new one.
Yeah, just adding that section, subsection to it. Because, I mean, it's getting out of control, I mean, really bad.
Okay, devil's advocate, who's going to argue abuse? I mean, clearly defining things that are not supposed to be in there, that's...
Exactly, and that, almost that whole ordinance tells you what should not be in there. We're talking grease, you know, smacks, white grease, oil paint.
Blood, grease, and turmeric.
The only thing that needs to be, the only owner that needs to be down in there is your poo poo, your pee pee, and toilet. Let me write this down. That is the owner.
The three P's.
The three P's, yeah.
Poo pee and paper.
Yeah.
And these are what are not.
She thought I made it three.
Those are not, yeah. Oh, that's it.
It's already probably shredded. What was it, acids, irons, pickled oils. You can't dump the pickle juice down...
No, you can't, you have to eat, you have to drink it. So you want to make up, add that, did you want to?
I do want to, yeah.
I think that's a proposal to add section E to...
What comes?
Ordinance four nineteen.
Four nineteen.
That's second button. Michael, how's that on the agenda for next month's meeting?
Next month's meeting, but we won't, we won't. If we can't do it, then we'll take them. If we can't do it, add section E. Now, if he's scheduled, how do you want to do that then? For what that is, for my team, whatever. Or, like, say we have to pump down something that we can't fit directly in the pump, it's got to go into the storage. Because it can indirectly affect the lift station or anything else. Do we charge for the gallon work, if Joanne kind of broke down her rates, or how do we?
That was a surcharge.
Does it charge for that, I don't know.
Yeah, remember she told you that was a surcharge.
So, I mean, I don't know how to break that down, because we got labor, and I have to go forward and all that. What do we charge? It's not really gross.
Is it a warning, I mean, as I said earlier, a warning?
The first, the first one is a warning, the second one is you get charged for whatever we have to replace.
Including that, all I know that...
We have to replace, and then plus the labor. And we need to be equipped, we need to replace.
Yeah.
And... Normally the first warning is a verbal warning for me, or if we find anything that I sell, because you're resident, pay the same...
Technically, I think you really do report that, and April wasn't having it right.
Well, yeah, mine too, but like, I mean...
I know, but I'm just saying about April.
That would...
I say normally when he does, I will send a letter stating that you're violating this ordinance. Send the ordinance to them, and then the next one will be you are charged for...
And do we keep a folder except for these letters?
I don't have a new one since I took those.
Because once we sell these E ones, that's what I was getting at, where they start doing that and tearing those up, or something happens, hopefully not. We don't want to have to be pulling new pumps, we just had to purchase that count, I mean.
Right.
And the lift station itself, we need to send that letter to everybody out there, I think. Because it's just getting worse and worse and worse, and if you can get a shampoo bottle down there, there's a problem. Among several things I want to discuss, but, you know, because that's just caused that failure there over time.
Because basically, once these new pumps get here, and I install them, or if you're going to take the honeywabby nuts, and suck the...
Take it all the way out?
Clean it all the way out. And then soon we're done doing that, and we will install the pumps, but I think the letter should be sent out before then.
Yes.
That way everybody has a warning.
I will do that tomorrow, I will be coming there.
Okay.
Send it to everybody?
On that, up there.
Or do I just send it to that section?
Can you send it with the water pump? I would say everybody that's on those.
On the connection, on that, because it's such a large...
Okay, just let me know what connection, what area is on that connection, sorry.
It's going to be everybody in the subdivision itself. Basically, all circle drive. I think, I think in reality too, I would send it to...
You'd just send it to that device?
The, I would send it to the gas station, Schultz, Schultz, and TG.
TG.
TG, Tom Cave, and the old place back there, I can't remember who they were.
Other than Inzley.
Other than Inzley.
I always had, it was a field off, uh, Denver, yeah.
Yeah, and then the ladder backs. Which they're on, they're on grinders themselves, but typically the stuff is not supposed to make it through. But I do see a lot of stuff make it through, so...
I'll do that tomorrow.
And you have to back, and, have to... And then, like, the new pumps, what do you want to do, once we install them? And do we want to honor, a more honorable warranty and maintenance, but after that, but unless it's some lack of views for that ordinance. So we got to point, replace it, or put on it, is it on the citizen, or is it going to be on our... Because that's what we're looking for money, I mean, we're just eating costs, because most towns, and you know that, most towns go to this. Because they can't absorb that cost, because people don't care it's not theirs. So, but, you know, what is your thoughts, Frank?
I mean, personally myself, I'm operating myself, and I don't know if we try to go just like Terelac and French Village and stuff, how they got their setup. I mean, hopefully we can get a hold of them, and see what their protocol and how they did. And I'm, and see how they sponsored it, of doing it, and then letting it go, or whatever, so...
Yeah, because I know that Terelac let it down, there's a lot of connections that aren't fixed, if they knew one didn't destroy them, they will not replace them. Because they absorb over probably, what was it, million dollar, easy? And they're already down probably if they're grinding, you know, grinders. That's why I don't want, you know what I'm saying, get to that point, and then we're even, we're just even dead for us per se.
I mean, I don't know what the board feels about it, how they feel about it. I mean, I, personally myself, I mean, with me being a sit-in in town, I don't have a problem with it, as long as I got all my stuff in my system. You know, right off the bat, you know, and I don't mind taking something over, because, you know, at least I'm not eating the cost of, right in the air. I mean, if twenty minutes on the road, it goes out, well, you know, I mean, replacing a pump. But I mean, we'd still be responsible to discharge.
Discharge on it to the man, yeah, which is normal and everything. Because that's why, what's your thoughts on, anybody have any ideas, consensus, thoughts, concerns?
That's a lot, I mean, you're, in the short term, it's not really costing the residents anything, right? Unless they destroy it in some way.
Yeah.
But down the road, what's the warranty against?
We got, I think it's a three-year warranty, I think. If, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a three-year warranty, if I remember right, I have to look at it again on what they were worth.
So if the thing lasts five years, and the resident has to buy it, I think they would object to it.
Yeah, I don't know. This is, I mean, it's, it's another...
Devil's order on the thing.
There's a dead end room in both sides, she says, but I mean, it's, if we're going to replace everything, you know, as in inside the pit, all the way to the control room. I mean, I don't have a, and I know that's how French Village did, Terelac and what, and I don't know how they, what they did as in, if they help with the cost of it, you know, if something happened to go out, or whatever. But I just look at it, is, you know, the abuse of the equipment. I mean, they know it's not theirs, and they're just abused it totally. If they know they have to take care of something, then they're going to be leaning on what they put in that system. And I mean, that's just like these E ones that we already installed, yeah, they'll get right through the grease. I mean, I've already watched it, and I gave warnings about it already, you know, about not dumping it, and I had April on one of them, I think it was, but disappointing. The grease hurt our system too, so, you know, I understand a little bit of grease on dishes, can't help it. But I know a lot of laundry stuff has stuff in it that causes grease to build up, and that's inside the grinder itself. Especially if you use laundry powder, so, I mean, the pods ain't so bad, but, but yeah, it's to the point where I think if they know that if they have something to have a cost of, I just do it there. I think they would turn around and go, okay, maybe putting that in the system. I mean, because I know around, you know, certain people's houses, and I can see what they put in there just, I mean, just like you go up to my house, there's, you know, hardly nothing in there. It just looks like water in there. I go to another house, and then it have grease balls up it, I mean, so it's, so, yeah, so it's a, it's what they put in. I mean, just like women's products, the hygiene products, I mean, if you did, you'd be amazed how quick it can actually hang out of the ground in your room, so... Like, I know women, men can't help with their hair, go down the drain, I've seen where hair's going to bind it up on them, you know, and that's because it's an older pump, and they ain't got the cutting power anymore. I have seen that, but you can't help that, but...
How could I, I'm just going to look crazy.
Yeah, I mean, flushable wipe, people think, oh, they're flushable. There's nothing flushable about them. Yeah, you can flush them, but the ground, there's no wipe in that, so... But I mean, maybe, and like I said, maybe April or wherever she can get with, French Village, talk to them, just see what they did, see what kind of arrangements they made, or whatever, Terelac, or whatever. And just see what their outcome was of it, and how they did it, or whatever, bring it back to the table, you guys look it over, and be like, okay, there's a, you know, does still help, or, you know, whatever. I mean, I just know what they did, so, and I ain't never heard a problem out of anybody really with it, but it's just, the thing about it is, is if it could be feasible to, there isn't feasible to us. We be in the middle or something, that's very fragile.
Whatever they're doing, just, you know, to look at it and see, because, I mean, maybe both ways. We don't use it, but what if it goes out, you know, I mean, true, pair apart, but again, three years versus twenty, that we lasted, I don't know.
And these are rated for fifteen to twenty years. I mean, just like, no offense to grinders, we already got the ground rated for twenty years. Well, they're over there twenty year more, and they've been, I mean, decent grinders, I mean, I'm amazed, you know, but newer stuff don't run in the long term.
It's, um, but...
But I say to do that, I would get over them, kind of talk to them.
Is there another, is it just French Village, or?
Really, Terelac.
How many communities use grinders? How many nearby communities use grinders?
There's still quite a few. I mean, there's a lot of it in, like, even up there, you know, like St. John's, we have, it's not owned by us, it's grinders, it's owned by residents that jumps into our main because of the gravity, you know, the elevation. So, it's a thing, most, most places as of now, is trying to go to gravity fed, and just have lift stations. But there's still a lot of out there community, small community, that has the grinder system, so, unfortunately. So, but they're, like I said, they're really all that, they went to, they replaced everything. They went in and replaced panels, and replaced grinders, a little on yours, but then they made an agreement, I guess, with the residents. This is what we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it, and everybody accepted. So, I don't know their paperwork, I ain't never seen their paperwork, but that's what you want to tell them, hey, call them up, find out, put it all on the table, gee, guys, you guys look at that, that's a good idea, you know, it's not a good idea, so I mean...
I think Lake Hannah Desert, in the city.
I think, Iron Mountain.
Iron Mountain, but, yeah, they're the ones having a real big problem, though. So, I may have some to look into, it's never been on it. I mean, it's a cost, I mean, it costs.
So I have number one, would be stop the current damage.
Yes.
And have the residents that's being neglectful of that pay for the damage. And then, item two would be what we do in the future in terms of upgrading, and the policies that we generate connected to that.
Correct.
So we're in agreement on step one.
Yeah.
And then on two, I guess we'll need more information.
Yeah, we'll just have to get more information from...
And base it off that, and go from there, work here.
Yeah.
Definitely have it made up.
Yeah.
So, that way, I mean, we don't keep grinding, because I mean, how much are those labor, the E ones?
What are the E ones now?
With, with labor, it's three state unit.
I just need to check. I can't remember, April, I've got so many things going on for you, and, so... Twenty twenty, I don't know if I got it right here. That's what I just did, with, we got to be, we need to be in, who's on? I think there's like twenty seven, twenty eight.
There was, yeah, seven point, between twenty five and twenty eight.
Yeah. Anyways, and if we took off, I think it was like thirty dollars off each one, because it had a disconnect, and we don't need a lot of the disconnects, we already got disconnects. So that takes off a little bit of money. And just for them to install them, it's an extra five hundred dollars, or whatever, to install, you know, so, just roughly around here, looking at three grand now, you know, if they come and actually install, you know. If they're sending them, we're going on the show, we're saving that extra five, you know, so, you know, so... The cost will up a little bit, everything's going up, you know, that, so, yeah, I think this last one was around twenty seven or something like that, so...
The labor's around three thousand, three thousand labor.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Any more on that, or? Should be ready. Michael, I want to introduce, he's a little bit late, like, he's an engineer, he contacted me from, is it Heartland Engineering?
Great.
Yes.
Sorry, I was skipping him.
Yeah, we're skipping down number seven.
Please, you can go on.
Yeah, let's go on.
Sure. So, my name is Mike Montgomery, Heartland Engineering. Some quick background about our company, brought lots of funding now to keep and use, or reason every you get tired at night, can't fall asleep, or save the day, so... A little bit of quick background about our company. We started it about two years ago. But we have been in the business for combined of over forty years now, so. The main things we work on are water and sewer systems, and beyond that, we go farther, and we specialize in helping folks to hear pumping. Quick question, why on TV tonight? So, so we go a step further than most engineers, and we work with a lot of small communities like yourselves, and we help find funding packages. So altogether, we've brought between four hundred and five hundred million dollars now to southeast Missouri for infrastructure and pumping. So, that's a combination of grants and low interest loans that save cities and users a ton, a ton of money over the long term. So, Mark Mayer, are you all familiar with Mark, or?
Me, yeah, that's me and Dida, but the guy from Kansas City area, yes, we met with him.
So I think it sounds like he came down and took some pictures and videos, drawing footage, all really good. And he reached out to us, because he knows that this is the kind of stuff that we work on. We work on very large projects and very small projects, so it's all the same for us. So, for instance, we just, we're in construction right now on a twenty-plus million dollar project on South Papa Love. And we also do teen-tiny, couple hundred buck jobs, so. It sounds really cheesy, but I like it, because we get to do a lot of good cheesy part of it. So, that is why I'm here tonight, it sounds like, just from what I've heard so far, you all have some substantial wastewater issues, some concerns. I have a lot of thoughts, just based on my very high-level conversations with Mayer, and just during you all this evening. However, you have already applied for what's called a clean water engineering program. Does that sound complete, everybody?
Yes.
Quick. And so, we, I have brought with me tonight's, our statement of qualifications, which is what it's called.
Is that completed, right?
Yes. And the, I printed it on my printer that is good enough for what I use it for, but the five higher quality ones are in there. So, and I was just trying to print those on the fancy printer. So, I brought that this evening, before I continue applying, if you have any questions or comments, back in the air. I'm going to bring this over here to you all too, and like I said, the full version is on its way, so, it's obvious to everybody. But I did want to bring that, just you guys to get an idea of who we are and what we do. I have a quick question for you all, this is a little bit put in the car before the horse, but do you have a total pressure system? Is it all pressure, or you have some gravity?
Oh, we have gravity fed, we have about, I think, forty, one gravity fed, and then rest of it, they're in, uh, fourteen.
Okay. Typically, I did hear some commentary tonight, just for background, how systems are typically set up. You may all know this, I might be reaching the wire here, but typically you put in pressure systems, when you have lots of hills, because then it's just not efficient for the gravity. But what a lot of communities do is, and we help them with, is we look for certain areas where we could, although there may be hills, we could gravity flow everything kind of to this basin, and maybe these guys can all go to this basin. And then you have two, one or two or three large conversations that can really tear through all that trash that comes through more easily. Save money in the long term, and also makes it easier on the end users, because you don't have to be in this situation of, are we responsible or are they responsible? At the end of the day, someone has to pay for it, so. There are also options where you can screen out a lot of the organics, biotics and things, fog up those pumps, the grinding pumps right now. And that's easier to do if you're happy, if you have lots of flow coming into one area. So instead of going to each area, like installing something like that, that's not very cost-effective. It's not like to put the cart way before the horse, but, and maybe that, you all already are set up in a way that it doesn't make any sense to centralize some of that flow, haven't looked at it yet. But, you know, I was trying not to interrupt earlier, but, yeah. So I have a little bit of different background from most engineers. I am an engineer, have my E license, line yards. However, I also was an operator for a number of years, wastewater operator. I operated forty facilities, and I've changed the way I see, and it's helped me, I think, be a better designer, and get better products to folks. I have an intern this summer, I tell him, things can look really good on paper, they can get real pain in the butt to build or operate. So, always love to get input from the community, the folks who work on every day, some of you all are good operator for my conversations. I don't know if he gives you trouble, and has it back to your face, and then he's still probably...
You may report to here, Chuck.
He knows it is.
Yeah.
He knows what he's saying. He knows his keys and keys.
He knows his keys and keys.
Yes. Uh, so our approach, we like to come in and, and help folks, again, we're kind of cheesy side of there. We do, it is business, we make money doing it, but we get to do a lot of good too. Um, furthermore, we really hold the community's hands as much or as little as they want for the whole process. Uh, everyone's different, some communities will be more involved, some say, this is too much, take care of it, either way, we're flexible. Um, let's see. Again, I want to emphasize the part about the funding, that's our main thing beyond just the engineering side. Uh, so there are three main funding sources in the state that you all may or may not be familiar with, but we write our report, if, if you end up selecting us, uh, in a way that all three main funding agencies would accept the report. Each agency has different criteria in their reports, uh, what they're looking for. So if you're missing a section, they may say, this one's not adequate, we'll come back and re-do it for you. It's not fun to encounter that, but the way we write them is holistic and we included, so it matches all funding sources. Uh, not to mention the fact, if they do come back and say, you're missing a section, we'll, we'll add a section if that turns out to be the better funding source for your community. Uh, there's a lot of grant dollars floating around, uh, and that's really what we hope folks capture first and foremost. I looked at some of your demo graphics online, um, how accurate do you think they are? The median household income right now is sixty thousand dollars, thereabouts, is that?
That's not very.
Does your guy tell you that's wrong?
My whole census is, yeah.
Okay, I agree, and driving through town, it could be, but I, there is, there are a lot of census errors, especially on small communities. Uh, have you all ever done an income survey?
We discussed it, but yeah, I think that's a point, and how many people would actually be willing to do so.
Yeah. Again, I'm putting the cart in front of the horse just a little bit, um, but I did want to mention it because driving through it did seem like sixty thousand is probably high, and the census data had a margin error, less or minus thirty eight thousand or something, which is.
Wow.
Anyway, uh, I, I can mind the census folks and say, that's cool.
That.
Yeah. I bet everybody there is sweet about it, so, yeah, for it.
So I've been involved in a number of income surveys, uh, throughout my career, we just finished one two months ago in Delta, Missouri, uh, just south of A. Uh, everyone I've been involved in, if a community, if I ask that question, do you all feel like this is great? If they say no, we feel like it's much lower, I got it in other community, better than you do. And we did the full census, uh, to the survey, can't find it, yep, your income was about half of what the census data said was, which moves into more grant eligibility, so, uh, what I'm getting at is a lot, even if you don't work with us, uh, that, that's okay. I want to make sure you all have the tools to.
Does your company do the surveys?
Uh, we, we help with it, um, and we have to be careful not to, there, there are certain rules depending on which funding agencies you're working with, because we have a dog, a dog and a bike, so to speak, uh, in that case, if we are working for you. However, are you members of the regional planning commission?
Yeah.
Plus, I can help you the whole, whole way, give you all the literature, strategies, Excel worksheets, uh, basically do it without giving you, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Plus, folks are much, in my experience, folks are much more willing to share that information with you all than they are instructed.
Some general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have a relatively small community, uh, three hundred thereabouts, uh, so the, the survey they would want is, just so you know, they would want you to survey every household, uh, they would only require that eighty percent of them give you an answer for what it's worth. So, again, I, I like mentioning that, uh, in case you do work with somebody else and they say, oh, your income just wasn't there, uh, I want to make sure you know that you have that tool in your pocket to be able to use that. Of course, it'd be worth, worth us and, well, it'll help you. Trying to think if there's anything else pressing tonight.
Do you do revisions of the current systems?
Yeah, so, so what we'll do, um, oftentimes, yes, so, back in a quick, oftentimes, a city will call or somebody will call me and say, hell, everything's broken. And I say, okay, let's start with the beginning, we'll go in, and then I'll oftentimes help guide them towards the engineering program you guys have already applied for and already done in the works, uh, because that's the best way forward, because it's eighty percent grant and it's a really good deal. It means that we can do a really deep dive and send in subcontractors, camera inspections, a lot more in-depth work than, than you would just get with help. Um, so, we're already a step ahead of where I normally start this conversation, uh, so yes, in the report, we'll do a, a full review of the system, we'll look at, in wastewater, we can do it in two ways typically, two, two parts. One is collection and one is treatment, and we'll look at both of those. Your collection system is the pressure and the gravity system together, and we'll look at that all together, and that's where I'll do a deeper dive and see, is this really, this setup, it, it may be the best option for you all right now. My gut tells me it was probably a more efficient way to do it, but I haven't looked yet to see. Um, and then on the wastewater treatment side, we would look at plants and see, how are the conditions in?
It's a thousand years old.
I need to show you that some flex, too.
And then we would look at a few options to get it all up to, up to current standards. And I like to use, uh, I'm kind of nerdy, engineer and all that, I work, good years, spreadsheets all the time. I like to say, I will make a recommendation based on what the spreadsheet says, unless you have a really good reason not to do that. And what I mean by that is, we'll look at three, three or so options that would work, and we'll do a long, um, twenty five life cycle analysis on it, and whichever one is cheapest is usually the one I'll recommend, unless you say, I just really like this plant, I want to keep it, and you all agree, well, I'll do it, it'll cost you more, but, uh, if that's an op, if that's what you want, uh, we would look also at options, rehabilitation, what can we do to bring this thing back to life and get another twenty, thirty years out of it? Uh, from what I've heard so far, it sounded like that's probably not the direction.
Frankie, you can pick the one that.
We did.
Oh. You're not reading this.
Did you reach your answer?
Yeah.
I didn't think we'd need a little TFC. Uh, that's really bad.
Oh, I'm TFC, really bad.
So I would look at, at those options. If it is just totally shot and it's not worthwhile looking at rehabilitation, I'll say, it's not, it's not worth, it's way too expensive and it's not going to work, skip it, and we'll give you a new option that will work. Uh, there's lots of different technology available, oftentimes we'll work with your city staff and see, what are you familiar with, what do you like, what do you dislike?
It'd be you, Ben.
Yeah.
You, you, Ben.
Like I said, I have a unique perspective because I work in this stuff, and that changed the way I saw a lot of this.
Big difference.
I'm curious as to the cost of the analysis, design and recommendation.
Good question. So, the, the grant that you all have applied for already, and you're applying next week or two weeks, and a big engineer to do it for you, that, that has an amount of sixty two thousand five hundred dollars, eighty percent of which is grant, so the, so DNR's going to give you all eighty thousand dollars to, eighty percent, fifty thousand dollars, so, I had to look at this.
I was walking to the house and, uh, the four-year-old tackled the two-year-old and
just looked at my wife, like, I gotta go.
I gotta meet you.
Yeah, I got a meeting, yeah. She looked at me skeptically, this guy, he's only a kid. Uh, so, anyway, I lost my grant up for a second, but yes, good question about the cost, you all will have a contribution of up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars towards that project, and that's what we've already gone, gone through. And that's why I mentioned before, that eighty percent grant means that we can do a really deep dive and do a lot of good and do a deeper analysis if we could, if you didn't have a grant.
And that's one thing, where are you all paid?
I should have mentioned that earlier, uh, Pobbleup and Hickory. I live in Hick, my business partner's Pobbleup, um, and we have staff in both businesses.
How old is the business?
Walking, two years old. Uh, as we said before, however, we have been in the business, my business partner's been doing it out of Pobbleup for twenty five years now, and I'm getting close to ten, oh, no, that's time flies, uh, it's, uh, out of the same area, so this is what we've done our entire careers. In fact, I interned with my now business partner, in front of City College, and that's how I learned people and stuff.
Where'd you go to your junior school?
S and T, Raleigh. I'm an intern, he's been working with me this summer, he's at S and T as well, so.
So let's, let's see, aside from the other ones, they all say they can have a big grant funding and help us with that, or be actually physically involved with the city, proactively working with the city, instead of saying, well, you know, here's a bunch of paperwork or B and and all this, and.
Yes, so I can mention, we will hold your hands as much or as little as you want and help walk you through the paperwork. There, there's going to be paperwork with everything.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that's the, typically I tell people to trade off the free money or grant dollars is headaches, paperwork and time, it usually falls on you. Are you a clerk?
Yes.
It usually falls on you. But we'll help.
But I do have a question, I know our operator here, Frankie, um, he likes to have somewhat say so on how he has the system going. Um, are you guys going to be opposed of him coming in and being there and showing you basically, you guys say, oh, we want it this way, but he says, oh, I want it this way, are you guys going to go with his word or are you guys going to go with the way you wanted it?
Um, we will take his word into consideration if there's a really good reason not to do that, like, I can't think, I can't think of an example, but if you wanted to like, I'm, it's me silly, I'm embarrassed, I'm on camera, if you wanted to like connect the sewer line to the raw drinking water line, I'd be like, no, no, I can't, I can't be on board with that, but as.
I'm saying, like, if he wants it at one angle this way and you guys want to do it this way, I mean, are you guys going to oppose of having it go the way he wants to go instead of the guy, the way you like it?
I am not ashamed to alter my designs ever, if there's a better way to do it than, not attached to that.
I would say, I was just asking, I guess he's known this, I mean, he's been in this town for twenty two years, so.
He was an operator, he's kind of.
Yeah, but you're being operators.
Subject to understanding Frankie's way of wanting to do things versus, and, and the right.
If I've gotten a good assessment, if we can take a day, maybe that Friday, I'm normally off on Fridays, for my job, but, um, if you come down on Friday morning and we go through and do an assessment or whatever, I can take you around, show you the, the, what the sewer plan is and how we want it or whatever, I think that, I mean, you show me blueprints, that's the way you like it, you go with it, so that's.
Frankie's got, he's on every day and is familiar with the bottlenecks, uh, the design bottlenecks, you know, as an engineer or where, and then the other side of it is he's an engineer, and there's certain way to do things, and that's the way you do it.
Oh, yeah.
And then that feeds, you know, that gets, uh, softened and taken to the additional, Frankie's perspective is necessary as well, because, uh, even in like an architecture, someone for designing a building, like the community center in St. Kennedy, and spend millions of dollars on it, and then five years later, they have runoff problems that are, who should have told them, don't build it this way because you're going to have problems, so that's really over.
Yes, I didn't mean to just make it sound like I wouldn't, I thought I would pose to him, he said, I just, uh, the safety of the public comes first, and, and what I would do, I wouldn't just say, no, all the way, I'd sit down and say, all right, let's talk about this and I'll explain why I'm doing this way, still, well, we have to figure that out.
Work on that.
We would work that out, we would both, uh, both be at the same page, but the, the odds of that even happening in the first place, I think, are really times to bet about operator.
It would be, uh.
Well, the bad idea is, you've been a wastewater operator, I mean, I do, but it's the point of it is, you know how your system runs and you know what needs to run right, you know, and that's, nothing engineers, engineers went to school to do this stuff, they don't see that every day, the service happening, so, you know, so.
One day, uh, I'll be finished with the project and I'll walk away, it will be settled and I would want to be your engineer forever, ideally, long term, so, for what it's worth, uh, for the walk, for the normal. Um, and yes, uh, I, I came back, I mentioned again, it's a long day, but I emphasize my intern, um, to always ask the operators and always ask the contractors, um, something like a really pretty neighborhood, it is just a, a work on to build or very difficult, so, I ask the people to deal with it every day, get their opinion.
Is anyone to do that?
No.
And I do know a lot of engineers who kind of, who, who knows up and say, nope, do it this way. Um, when it comes to the public safety, at a certain point, maybe you have to do that, but.
Oh, yeah.
Most things, it's, I, I did have a, an operator once who wanted me to, he, he wanted, uh, I'll give you an example of the time, it's, I'm getting myself older, uh, whenever, he, he wanted two wells right, right to each other, I mean, right next to each other, that's one, that's one. Well, he thought so, he wanted to just do one of the same, but I said, I really can't recommend that from the engineering perspective, I know it sounds good, but the problem is it's drawn and it's. I lost the project, but later they said, we should be right, uh, so, uh, you know, I guess I, I'll put my thing out if I have to, but it's so weird, I don't think that's my issue.
Yeah.
Have I bored you all to death?
No.
Not at all.
If you have any other questions, feel free to give me a shout. Um, like I mentioned, starting around funding, we get a lot of latitude, freedom to not have to answer to a manager or somebody else for corporate things, so I take a lot of time out of my day, every day to help folks, um, answer their questions and people, although it isn't a nice thing, it's not just because I'm not excited and that's got, it's, it is business and people appreciate it, and typically people say, thanks for helping, I want to help some more, uh, and that's where we do help find grants and everything else and make it actually happen. So we won't just write the report in this case and walk away. If you want to chase us out of town, you can, but, uh, we'll put together a funding package and work if you all work with the community and see what fits your needs, because that's, uh, and it sounds like there's a lot of need for that.
Yes.
And there are grants on grants on grants for other things, uh, that I won't bore you with tonight, uh, but have you all worked with grants often before?
I did DTS out of there, and so, I mean, he's worked with the fire, Department of Conservation and probably other ones.
I have not, I'm only in the Currier map, so.
So there are, there are a few other, uh, for public infrastructure grants that are available for really good programs. The pain in the butt side is, you can get a lot of here that one too, so, if you want information about that.
Except for building systems?
Or lots of things, so oftentimes, the one I'm thinking in particular would be for things like street rehabilitation, uh, five hundred thousand dollars if you can put in something, a town has a small fund, uh, they definitely, if you have, I'm going to use an example of this kind of silly, you know, silly is my thing, if a town has a hundred dollars in a grant account, some, I don't know, refinancing, sometimes have a hundred dollars in a grant account, they put in ten dollars towards the project, uh, community about the block grant, we look at that as being very competitive, whereas a town with twenty million dollars, who puts in twenty million dollars, they'd say, come on, you can do better. Uh, so for what it's worth, so it's really tailored towards small, poor towns. Right now, on the surface level, you're not eligible because of the census data, however, communities just like Delta, who, they were eligible several years ago, I wrote the report at the project building, then they were not eligible any longer because of the census data, and went in, did an income survey, and said, look, they are eligible, um, so that's kind of the more, more backside of that one. So they're now back in the process of getting their five hundred thousand dollar grant to resurface their streets, and they're going to have, they only have ten thousand dollars for their contribution, and, and so for what it's worth, it's good, a lot of, and, and I get worried for, but that's really where we found our market. Of course, if a community wants to come to us, hire to do a thing, sure, if they just want to pay out, they'll talk, they will do it, uh, but most communities aren't. But most communities aren't in a situation where they need to do that. So that's where we really found the niche, and why we brought the way and started.
All right.
Well, Mike, I appreciate it.
Yeah, very much. Nice to meet you. Again, like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a shout. I know the time is short, you extend the, the.
RFQ.
RFQ, do you know, are you, do you know when we're gonna do the selection questions?
That's what made you guess we'll start.
Well, we won't do our selection, because I have to look at all the packets and see the questionnaire.
Probably the fourth, I don't know, maybe.
Either that or definitely by September, or September meeting. How we ended up having to have.
Budget.
The budget, what's the issue, so, I mean. I mean, definitely by the September meeting.
Yeah, but I said, every man.
It will work with that. Every community, have you guys gone through this process before for anything, RFQ process? But not that solely.
Everybody hears a bit.
Oh. Congratulations, Urban Dollars.
Barely, I mean.
Yeah, I was joking. So with the, this is part of the whole, we try to, I try to explain everything so people have, say, their own destiny. But so they have some, something in the project, they know what's going on, they have assigned these papers that they have questions about. They can, but I try to explain it and it's off here, if you let me. So the RFQ process that for engineers, engineering selection, is request of qualifications. You're in that process right now. And that packet I brought is our, what's called statement qualifications. So whenever you do have your meeting or your pick an engineer, it'll go through, look, and different criteria. It's awkward, it's so awkward, but that's the statements that it requires. So you look at who's got the prettier pictures, all the signs, or who did you. I know, I was, a proposal is one thing, if you're looking at a proposal with a dollar amount, you can go with, if you want this. Everything's the same, you go with a cheaper option maybe. Request of qualifications process is very awkward. I know, that comes not easy, you feel so nice, a face on a picture. But it's appreciated.
All right, Mike, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's all right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have two other RFQs, but something extended. I'm not allowed to give you guys those packages.
Well, one thing that he mentioned just now and that we've mentioned earlier is the income survey. So I think we need to get on that right away, because that's our next step anyway, for all of these things. Because it'll help with the streets, et cetera.
Can we do that before we get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, even during that process, they'll reevaluate.
I just gotta figure out what surveys and some of that.
Because they would get, that's gonna be most cost efficient and then like easy to everybody.
Well, they have Mary or Michelle.
Did Mary say something, Mary?
There's like, there are two ways to do it, I think.
I hope she said the.
Yeah, three different, yeah, Mary said there are two or three different ways. And I think she's ever, she never got back to me on which way would be the best.
Why, I would actually like to see, see them, and then maybe we can decide on which one we wanna send out.
We should do that soon, and then we could ask Michelle in the county office, too, because she's probably familiar with that.
I have to.
I think people actually counting the K of those versus just knocking off the.
Depends on the month. Really, I mean, I think this month, or the months that we're doing, July, or July tenth, I think I maybe sold twenty, twenty-five people.
Yeah, but we need to get, we need to put this first to get this done quickly. Because it'll, it'll have benefits for our wastewater system, the streets, et cetera, so. Yeah, because that's how she married today. She asked, well, she's working on her gray water study for drinking water rates and everything right now. She had it done, I can wait hopefully, so she's doing four of the ones too, so I can kind of, you know, between. See, she's saying now, I can't clear what she might think will work better, to kind of get better responses, eighty percent. So, because that's what she was trying to get at, doing the gray water study. And then kind of blend it in and get more people involved to make it more, you know. That, I guess we'll go back to this way. Another re-employment handbook update. I don't do that, I got that binder. Yeah, I've got a binder still. Do you want to revise that or are there any changes? I mean. There'll be a couple revisions, but it's pretty, it's pretty complete, so.
Do you still have mine, binder?
I have a binder with, with playing, but I can't, I can talk about tomorrow.
Please, I'll look at it, maybe I can see if there's any revisions I can make.
Yeah, I'll put post it in. Okay, so that's good. Great, and it sounds great. Those are, I thought this would be seen at highway anyway.
I know, that's what I, so I said, they, this is all sort of little maps that we can give.
And they have the signs up for it, but.
Right.
Here in.
What we don't understand is what exactly they want from us. Did you understand a lot of it? What did they want from us?
I.
None of us really, got what they want, so April was wanting to.
Call them.
Call them and find out whether they will want.
But I had to know what questions you want me to ask.
It depends on what exactly is it they want.
And then just reading and looking at the stuff they've listed, there's stuff in here that may connect with the French Creole, Romeo, Quattro. We have our historic homes are listed. Here in the town, it would be Cascasque, where St. Mary's name was down here, the steamboats used to come. Flower Mill, which was, I guess, where the elevator, the train elevator is. And I guess the Shoff House, who used to own the mill, was the, I did a tour with my brother two weeks ago. That spoke about St. Mary and the flower mill and the name of the, uh, lot, names based on the flower sets, et cetera. So we could probably direct her to St. Kennedy's historic office.
But I said, we're not sure what she wants, what they want.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
If that's on this page, kind of, kind of a breakdown. Here basically, you know, basically puts on the map, basically, but you're only asking for, um, ordinance or what was it? Sony, when they were asking for Sony.
Well, we created Sony for historic areas in the town, which would be, I guess, a lot of the houses up on the hill there. That they've gone over, or the primary.
And you guys are in primary ones.
Because the others are washed away.
Yeah.
But so, out there, they left, and you have the, which includes back into the war. Yeah, but I mean, you're from here, so maybe we can designate, uh, you know, like Ward One is the historic district or something. Which would include the Sears, you know, classic style also, up on top or whatever. Hey, okay, so much for that.
Purple way by this.
So. Do you want to talk about the streets?
Oh, yeah, the streets, yeah. Also, I talked to Mark, so I got me with him and the commissioners, he's doing a little. About finding our worst streets, deciding on what our worst streets are, bring it to their attention, and see if maybe they can help us with the temporary like that. Chip and seal stuff, I mean, until we can get a clearing or we did that, and the project's gonna take a little while, I mean, everybody's in mind. I mean, so, um, so he wants me to bring that up with the commissioners. So is there any streets you guys want to think that has most need to the less? So would it be measured with money wise? So they can see what they would be willing to chip and seal and that kind of, find that to get a little guest bike for several years, kind of, with the bridge down there.
And that's a question on that. Yeah, but, so how's that gonna work with, you know, chip and seal, I understand what they're doing, but how's that gonna work with the trench lines from the water stuff that's setting out or? It was trying to, you know, like, where they put the water main, and they're gonna suck it down, and they patched them, but they sunk it in on that. I don't know, I don't know if they have to put.
That would be a question to them.
I don't know if they have to put objects in there to.
Make a tag?
Yeah, I mean, we got a tack oil already, but I'm trying to say, do we have to level it up? Or we're gonna have more tack oil, and a lot more screens to it? Or, you know, and then the other question is about the valves. Everywhere we start laying a tack oil and that chips down, what that's gonna do to the valves, you know? I mean, I ain't got valve chip and seal, chip and seal works great after you put it mostly high, but it's just a point of it. The big business valves and stuff. Once you put the hackle over there.
So I mean, I can bring in a chip.
Yeah, I did the hackle about it.
You have that one that's covered up down in the bends, where it's chip and seal, the valve, if the valve's covered there, do you have to?
There's two valves there, they're in the gravel, they're not actually underneath the chip and seal.
Oh.
They're right there.
So, or whether the deeper, ever.
They, they never come across, the valves, they were just gravel. They just did, where we raised it at. But it's just a question on, because once that chip and seal gets to a point that hard and it's like asphalt, and then it is, basically, same thing.
I mean, have an idea for that.
I mean, for one road, you could, I mean, possibly do that, you know, H Street going up between, uh, Mulberry and Spruce. That one needs to be done. The other one that needs to be done, which I don't know, there's one resident back there, and that's Spruce Street coming up to H Street, down to the park.
What about at the base of the hill, parallel to sixty-one? So there's three or four streets, like by the church, across the street from the church.
Six Street, I don't know how Six Street really looks, I haven't drove down it. Like, you know, I mean, just kind of look at how the alleigator parrot is and all that. No, Seven Street, down to the river end, needs to be done. But State, you got, and that's a point too, State's got the right of way, at a certain area, you gotta watch how we fade and whatever on that right of way. I think it's like a ten-foot pass, which you do have valves there at the end. The other street is basically like your street up there, that one's.
They're called like two parts, yeah.
But there again, you have the gravel trenching, you know, you need to lay hot mix down, you know, to patch them.
By locusts or?
Well, I mean, I'm talking about up there in the corner at Herd House, you know, on that corner, location third, there's a trench, a gravel trench there still.
Right.
So, I mean, the other street, like I said, I mean, I drive up it, and it looks fairly rough. I mean, Fifth Street and Dome Street going up, Two or Four Street is kind of rough. I mean, it's a gator cracking and stuff. I mean, like Four Street's up on Marine Cliff, besides the trench going across where we had to replace a water, uh, service line. All that's been blacked out before in recent years, I mean, it's been, it's been a few years, but it's been, it's been recent. And then Four Street over here, that's been a base there. I mean, the other one, I would say Six Street, Six Street up two Cedars in the corner, probably could use chip and seal, you know? But my biggest, my biggest concern is the trench lines and the service line trenches, or where they actually patched them from the water line project, how that's gonna interfere with chip and seal. I mean, chip and seal and tack oil, they only put tack oil so thick and then spread the chips across it. How's that gonna?
Say a little bit on that.
You gotta fill a little bit on that.
I don't know if it'd be better off to do a Dan overlay with the trenches first, you know?
Seems like it would. That's what they did on St. Peter, they did a Dan overlay, they haven't did over the town. So what about there, do you think?
Other street needs it all the way in, I mean, all the way from Mulberry, all the way back up here, probably all the way out to On Street, or at least.
Or on.
Yeah, and I mean, that there though, there then, chip and seal, I mean.
Do you really want chip and seal?
I mean.
Doesn't look good.
If you wanna just spend money on a hillside, I mean, or what would I do? I think we'll just sit here with a rock and with a hill for two months, so.
I personally think that probably shouldn't be done right away.
Joker's a cheaper.
It's gonna keep coming down.
Well, I mean, Joker's the only one that's gonna.
But that thing is the.
So what I'm just saying, I know we only had one bid at one time. If they're the cheapest bid, I mean, Joker does, I mean, like, I mean, Heather Duncan's got the flaws, but they can do it, roll.
And, and you know, the transfer, we, they talked about doing those two, including in that bid.
Are you talking, you talking about where all the cutouts are at?
Yeah, he talked about to put it at.
If they're gonna include that, it'd be great, because they can dig them out fast and throw them and patch them. Because I mean, by the time I dig them out and one of us goes gets hot mix. I mean, they got the machines to do everything, a lot of having to do them all.
That's what we got, the alley and the workers and everything.
But we definitely need to get that done before winter time hits, because if we start falling snow, we're gonna be over in the corner.
Oh, really? So, I mean, that's something I guess, I mean.
If you guys, if the fudge is there, we can do it, roll with it.
Good.
All right. For the purple way by, so I met with a guy with a purple way, sort of, today. He come down and just kind of get an idea, he went to the fire truck, and showed me some, once close to yours. So, I mean, what they're going for and what they're still for, just starting seeing, I mean, it's as close to what you're kind of wanting, or what are you wanting?
I don't see five out of it.
Never know about that anymore, so. Then next week, he sent some of that to the pictures and everything else, so. I was gonna ask him, yeah, what about these little hose drills or anything miscellaneous you wanna try to get rid of? Or you wanna keep them whole thing?
I mean, a lot of that was basically given to for other, other trucks. And I mean, if I decided if we get our new brush truck, we can use some of that for our.
I mean, no, I'm just asking, this is the way we're at while I was there. So, yeah, there's the reels up there.
No, no, everything, pretty well, next year, you're gonna have real repair, just suck down from here.
So that's if he's gonna get the paperwork sent over for us and everything like that, so.
And then connected to that is the tractor, did you talk to?
I, yes, I already did, yes, and the one's still not in. And I don't know where, where it's at, to this point, I'm not calling it anymore.
Okay.
He's got those other ones, like you showed me, there's one in there.
They're smaller?
It's a little bit more than we got, but he had a John Deere fifty, was it, was it fifty, fifty-seventies? But it had a backhoe attachment already on it, so I don't know what it's for. Trent's got one, I don't know if you've seen it, if those are any good or not.
I don't know.
So it's choice six, you know, so. I was just waiting to see if we went on it.
So, it's choice, you know, so, I was just waiting to see if we're calling it, calling it in the mall.
Yeah.
You know, before we finally made our final decision on the tractor, that we're gonna, we're gonna give that much a trade. Yeah, we need to push on that, because, uh, I'm feeling what you all have said about our system, and to keep it current. And we need to find another rotary cutter, because now the gear box is starting to go, like, totally go, so, that's a safety issue, we can try welding the rest, but there's not a lot of, 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 I mean
Right.
So, once you think it's salvageable, I
I'd say, dude, try to get some, you know, flex, you know, but not hanging in, you know, once you have your, uh, housing, and the tops start going out like that, you basically gotta refab the whole thing, so, you're in Costs for steel and refabbing, and having somebody refabbing, or, I mean, I could weld, but I might be able to refab something like that.
And, I mean, it's starting to tilt, it is, that's why, some shillings are down Purple Way, if we wanna get, because he has rotary, he's like that, but they're a lot cheaper than a John Deere brand, but they're, but not gonna be better.
How wide?
Seven.
Seven foot?
Maybe that's a small one.
And that's adequate for our needs?
Yeah, seven foot, and I, he's got some, I reckon, must do like that, for a real big one.
All right, well, if we can get a deal on that with the tractor, then that's a good
Okay, O'Neills, we need to figure that out.
Uh, so, we could go, I guess, we into the bank, and get that pulled out to hand, and then just kind of shut it off.
All right, we need order one. It's taken care of. Well, I mean, but our other issue is something that major been taken care of.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I think that was, yeah.
But O'Neills, y'all, just have to take it off.
They just got a pair of paperwork, and calling the warranty, get them going.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that
I know, that's why I'm going to the person in the morning, and Get back to our home.
All right, great.
But then our other, other issue with the lift station.
That's what I was gonna have an address to, we want to do that.
Do what?
It'll take the money out.
Listen to me.
Okay.
The lift station is being taken care of.
What if he wants?
Both of us, and he wants.
Okay, the chambers helping us.
St. Mary's Chamber is helping us.
Okay.
And we both love them, but they're also paying for the contact, or the contact, new stuff, that way it's
The relays and stuff?
Relays
The new box stuff?
Yes, it's all gonna be
Thank you, that's great.
I have, I actually have a, you are here, that rolling company, St. Mary's, that was very, very awesome, at the Chamber, too.
It was awesome, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So that, that was a, an expense.
Yeah, that's twelve thousand, that's twelve thousand dollars.
So, that was awesome at the Chamber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all over those pumps, right? Over those pumps? How over those pumps?
What pumps?
The, the stage pumps.
Since I agree, like, everybody signed a agreement, so
I think they, I think they, they were put in, and I'm, uh, shoots out for ninety eight, or something like that, I don't know, I can't remember the wrong
What, they would, do you think they would put them in whenever they did, maybe so, would they?
Yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
It's got nineteen ninety three inside, the, or the concrete.
Yeah, that's when they put the
Yeah, that's when they put it in, with that control
Like, so, they're going in after the night.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah.
It's a
This one starts to leave all the chamber, and taking for the chamber.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
This is a dissection, anybody?
Yeah, who mowed the, my citrus trees down north of Bakers?
Yeah, I saw that.
Was it me?
I took data on the last one, so you know what?
Well, you mowed two or three, but now they're all gone.
I mowed two or three, yeah, I investigated.
So
Might have been Cody.
Yeah.
Not realizing they were there, because he did mow it.
It's not the first time he's mowed trees down that I've
Nah, I, this year, I don't know about
So
He gets to join me at a tree planting party.
If you have anything to do with people mowing, there's no mowing of the citrus trees, they stay
He might have saw them, as tall as that grass was, was probably as tall as the trees.
They have flags, they have flags, the rest of the road is, there's still any distance, so
I'm just saying, he might, he probably accidentally did it, I don't think he did it on purpose.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta realize, he blind didn't want on, so
Yeah, my grass, but
You're a neutral tree call.
My point on that Frankie Brad, we had a painting the other day, the Department Conservation, they used to, A C to maintain that area, and everything, at one time.
Where?
Over here.
On the other side of the road.
Over at the boat ramp.
Well, the boat ramp, they take care of that.
No, we used to brush haul it, but I don't know how that's set up.
Uh, they, the actual ramp went down here, uh, they leased, every so many years, they sign a lease, there should be paid to work somewhere in the office.
I could say about that, I could say that.
The maintenance?
Yeah, the leases
Used to, they would come and mow the little driveway.
Yeah, but, but, hey, they quit doing that, but, and we started doing it, but down at the boat ramp, we used to brush haul all that, and since I've been gone, it's never been brush hauled, so I didn't know if there was, if the leases were in or not, or what was on
I say, I haven't seen anything.
There should be paperwork in there, people, they sign a lease with us, or whatever, or the boat ramp.
And word, words.
I was under the, in question, they was supposed to take care of
Well, the only thing that they, so, when Joanne was in here, I remember they used to sign a lease, and do all that, and we brush hauled all that down here, and before I left, I was brush hauling it still. The only time they would come down, is if we had a flood, and we couldn't move debris, Joanne would call them, they'd bring their dogger down, or whatever, and they'd fix the driveway and stuff, but we just, we maintained the grass along the creek.
They didn't say that they
I don't know, I don't know
They didn't brush, brush haul the two ever, or something, I mean, it sells them.
So, if there's an agreement, putting on these, if we get paid for, we need to make sure
I'm never pointing the engine, we lay contact, I don't know, but turn around and mow their
Make sure they're working, I don't know.
Have to be, I don't know. No, I'm not, the roads
Oh, the roads, that, 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 that tree, or is that run out of
Maybe the mother's
The, 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 conservation, for our time to be seen, or, or, or
Where is that one happening?
In the ditch, at the ditch, that ditch they made
Like, they're always
All the way from there, that's our bed, I don't know where they made that ditch.
So, where is the office that has to do with the boat ramp? Is it Kate, Perrigo, on, uh
Jeff's
Jeff's
You have to contact Jeff's, well, actually, you know, you contact Kate Southeast Region.
Southeast Region?
I have to look for that lease first, before
I usually have children, remember?
Before I, you know, even looking, like
No, she don't want, I don't know, at least I remember, that's how I got, or something happened, but
And, oh, why, you think so, or?
Well, no, I like to know, and it's all good, looking like
I have a car, I'm there, I'll be still there, like
I'm just looking, oh, my God, I think those are people like
I don't know, there's a number on the little, the little sign, it's calling, it's, it's a Department Seizer, I think, like, the other day, it signed, you know, on the memory
No, they've been, yeah, not for years, they're dead, you know, the number over there, for, just the main office, I don't know if it
Oh, it's actually, oh, yeah, it's still running, I don't know.
My, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else on anybody's mind, anyone talking about, or cause concerns, or we're going close? All right, motion, do a, if you vote, oh, work session, and
I made a motion to close the work session, that's seconded.
Second, motion made, seconded, all favor?
Right.
Any close?